Well, I guess we'll start then, Sixty, call over. Entertained motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Been moving second to approve the agenda, all, everybody in favor say aye?
Aye.
Agenda approved, approval of the minutes of February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, so everybody had a chance to read those? Entertained motion?
Can we vote now?
Yes.
I mean, we can, okay, alright, I assume.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
And I suppose at this time we should welcome our new members, does everybody know each other? We have Jan Sessard and Jim Gary?
Jim Gary?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Mickey Quell, hi.
Hi.
Susan McCollum.
I think I knew you.
Did you know me?
Yeah, I think so. I've seen you around a lot.
We'll move on to three, unless someone wants to discuss that else? The approval, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, four, the available balance report. Uh, this is not as complicated as it um, looks on paper. I looked it up today with, at the city, oh, Teresa's in there?
Sorry.
Yeah.
And we are just at fifteen thousand dollars.
How much?
Fifteen thousand dollars still. Which will go away on June thirty and then be replenished on January, July one. Does anybody have any questions about that?
We have the new, same amount for the next budget.
It'll be the same amount for the next budget.
I guess, there might be more.
So how's that work, like it's gone and then it's back, like what?
Well, it's, um, we don't get to keep the money, we don't get to roll the money over. So, there's fifteen available for this calendar year, sorry, fiscal year. And then beginning the next, it'll still be available, but accounting wise it goes away and it comes back.
Okay.
Instantly.
I see, that's good.
So if we, if we were to successfully bring down a house for six thousand dollars, let's say, and we had nine thousand left. Then that nine thousand would go away and fifteen thousand would go back in.
Oh, okay.
Where does the money come from?
General fund, city's general fund.
Oh, I'll do that, it's part of the city budget.
Send extra paper there Curtis?
It's kind of, oh, this is for you. Any more questions about the uh, balance report? Okay, five public forum and communications and no public to speak, did anyone receive any communications from the public they'd like to share? Verbal or written? Alright, we'll move on. Six ongoing business, A, approval of revolving loan administration rules and application. In your packet is the uh, the uh, what am I trying to say? The rules that were approved at the first meeting, I think in January by the city. And this might be out of order. And then, oh, I'm sorry, it's at the back, administrative rules for the city. And the second to last page is, is the, uh, just the application. You guys directed me to add a signature line and a date for multiple parties, just in case there were. Uh, more, in case there was more than one owner. And, we've done that. And, uh, any discussion? Or questions?
These have been reviewed by the city, haven't played the rules.
They've been, they've been passed.
And they're, they're an agreement.
Yep, we reviewed them, they reviewed them, they passed them. Uh, just waiting for us to pass them. So an entertaining motion to uh, accept the administrative rules and application for the. Let's get it right here. For the Sac City Planning and Zoning Revolving Loan App, Application and Rules.
Also move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, we've got a first and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Passed. Next is review nuisance property list, uh, that would be seven B. This was a list that we were looking at for a while that was a list of homes that have not had utilities turned on. For six months or longer, does everybody recall that? That list is uh, now outdated. And it takes about twelve man hours to generate a new list, according to the city administrator. It's the uh, city staff who did it, it was three people working four hours. And they are, they seemed hesitant to make another list because it's such a gray area of sharing utility customer information with addresses. Does that sound like any discussion you've had, Teresa? So, I think.
Sounds a little odd to me, but that's just my opinion, I, I don't know. I guess I don't think we would be able to do that.
The list we had before, did it list property owners, it just listed the addresses?
It listed addresses.
It just had the addresses.
Right.
Planning and zoning, yes.
How many are on it, how many houses are on it?
There were quite a few.
There was a lot.
Yeah, there was a lot on it.
Some of them did list owners on there, because I've got it right here.
Okay, so I think what, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, with your permission, I'd, I'd like to go. Speak with Adam and figure out if there is a less gray area that won't get us in trouble to have that be public, that we can review. As a guide for properties to look at. For nuisance abatement.
But you know, if you drive around town, there are several properties that have doors standing open and you can see right into the homes.
Oh, there's several around town.
Well, that's, that's a really good point, do, do we need for them to spend another twelve hours generating a list?
I mean, in Stacy's email today, that he sent out, I mean, there's three really good ones right there to start working on.
Can you send that out to the group?
Yes, I saw it.
Yeah, I came late this afternoon.
It was this afternoon sometime.
Can you share the gist of that email?
Um, it was Gagey's house, the one behind.
Crossroads. And the apartment house on sixty, and the apartment next to the old funeral home.
Those were four of them that he mentioned that would be good ones to possibly start with, that Johann Funk that owns.
Yeah.
The one next to the funeral home and Blau's old apartments, right, both of them?
I believe that's right.
It was one that was arrested in Storm Lake for that prostitution ring.
That's the one next to.
It might be a good time.
Next to the funeral home?
And Blau's old apartments.
On South Six.
On South Six.
You know, it's both.
South of the post office. So.
Sounds like a two birds with one stone deal.
So it might be a good time to go for those two, I don't know.
Does anybody live in um, Blau's old apartments?
Not anymore, they could, I think they pretty much kicked everybody out of it.
Supposedly he was gonna re, you know, redo it all, but I can't think that's gonna.
It happened almost a year ago, but it was.
Um, and then Stacy also said that um, possible buyer for Gagey's.
Really?
But Brian will let him know within the next week, I think it said in that email? Or something like that? If the sale goes through or not, if not, then.
That's the email right there.
Oh, thank you.
Email when I got home I'd check it out and check it out.
Um, there's four good ones we could possibly start with right there.
Okay, well.
Do you bill them for that, or how does, or how does that work?
It depends on, it depends on what happens.
Okay, kind of the negotiation process.
Different processes.
For different things. Some are, some, not unluckily, we don't really have any of these, but some are dangerous. And just need to come down. A lot of them are just nuisances and we, and we give them a notice, we give them a second notice. Then we start negotiations for, for getting them down. At, at, at some point we'll, we'll go to court. Start a legal process. And actually, one of the things we did tonight, this uh, loan administrative rules and application is sort of a tool that we've created to help with that. If someone gets a notice, we give them this information so they can apply for a low interest loan to help them fix it up.
Okay.
So, just to finish off, uh, six B. Do we, do we want to create a new, uh, turned off utilities list, or do we want to just go forward and just look for ourselves? Because, you know, it's, it, the criteria is that the utilities have been off for six months. And I don't know how quickly it becomes outdated. You know, if someone turns something on, then it doesn't count anymore, and, but we've still got them on our list.
As far as planning and zoning goes, it really doesn't make any difference whether they have utilities or not, does it, I mean, it's more the condition of the property and uh.
Well, I think we were just using it as a guide to help us.
Well.
Understand who the.
Kind of look at some properties.
Absentee owners.
Yeah. But I mean, if a house is vacant and it's not hooked up to anything, but they're keeping the house up and it looks decent, that's really not our concern, is it?
Yeah, I agree.
Do you still have the old list Frank?
Yeah. It's kind of all marked up, because we divided it up and each of us took like about five or six properties and. To kind of drive by and take a look and see what kind of shape they were in, but there was, well, there's one whole page and about a dozen on the second page.
So, could we just kind of make our own list and?
I would say, yeah.
Go from there, and then if we have questions about it, maybe we can ask the girls to look just that property up? I mean.
And then it would, and then it would also help us avoid any, any problems with utility information being shared with us.
I mean, we're all around town.
Yeah.
A lot, I mean, we all drive around a lot and are through town and, so we can kind of come up with our own list, I think, and kind of go by what we've got on. The old list there that Frank has.
Okay, Frank, do you need that, do we move, uh, motion, or can we just move on?
Oh, I can, I'll just, I'll just redo it so we have a clean list to work with, I mean, we can.
Well, you can kind of take it next meeting and look at it.
We can look at it.
Oh, I'm, I'm talking about as an action item, do we need, do we need a motion to move on from that, or do you want?
I don't know, it's up to you.
Okay, I would say no.
I don't know that it requires action.
Okay, uh, let's move on to seven, does anyone have any other thoughts about the, about the utility list?
Did you want to do sixty? Or did you skip, did I skip one?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on six B.
Okay. Sorry, sixty, okay.
Six C, review of planning and zoning officer, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, didn't, didn't we have it narrowed down to like those two or three that we were really gonna focus on though, the last time we met?
We did.
Okay, and are we, coming through something, or I guess we're waiting because.
That seems like a, that seems like a good thing to do on the next item.
Steve's gonna be talking to the, or finding out, Steve.
Brian, I think.
Or Brian, Stacy'll find out by the next.
Yeah, but, I mean, if you want to look at that Funk property, those could be two of the first two that. Apartment building's gonna take a lot, I'm sure. There'd be a lot of our money right there.
But, we've only got a couple more months left anyway before we lose it.
True.
So.
So I might as well do something with it.
May as well go.
Yeah, this July will start over again.
Even if it took the whole budget, I mean.
This is not a good sign.
Be done.
You know, I'm sorry, everybody.
What about the property, um. That property over on, oh, what is that street over there, um, you know where the, they took out the old bridge that went down to the park?
Oh.
Leonard. I thought we had, had made a decision or voted on a house over there that we were actually gonna do something with.
On where, Leonard?
Yeah.
The one on the end there where the bridges out?
Oh.
I think what we actually did was we voted, we voted to have Stacy use his judgment to pick a house. And then last month we found out that, as he began proceedings against that property, they changed deeds, making it a new. A brand new thing and where it zero again.
Oh, okay.
On that property?
I don't know what property.
That was on the Gagey, that was on the Gagey property, I think, because that was the one we were gonna pursue last time we met.
Stacy wasn't here to share it with us, so, not really sure what property it was, if it was a Gagey property, you know that?
I'm pretty sure that's what's property was, yeah.
So we haven't taken any action with the one on third, at the end?
Yeah. Third Leonard?
Yeah, I think you were talking about, right?
Yeah. I remember what that bridges out.
What was that, like, wait till you hear?
Take that whole block.
There's one house on there that doesn't look too bad.
True, okay, go, go to the one on the corner, to the other corner.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, um, it sounds like, uh, well, what, is anybody else interested in any other specific properties? Susan's interested in the one on third Leonard, we've got a discussion going about the apartments next to the thing and, and the other apartments. Are there any other properties we're interested in? For a while, we talked about the one behind the convenience store, on Williams.
Yeah, and he's mentioned that in the email too. Yeah, behind.
I'd say any of those four would be good to start with.
Are we just gonna direct him to use his?
Should we leave it up to him, let him pick one of the four?
Let him pick, or do we want to prioritize for him?
Two of the four?
Do you want to prioritize for him at this point? And just say, hey, this is our list, these, these, this is the priority, whatever you can do on any of these?
Well, maybe like you said, we should go something with the, the Funk property since he's kind of.
In his email, he says he's not opposed to kicking a man when he's down.
I saw that too. Might be a good time to.
I had to laugh, yeah.
Yeah, we could go and read it, read it.
Yeah, it's pretty funny.
Are, this property on third and Leonard and the property behind Crossroads, are either one of those out of town owners, or does anybody know?
I don't know about third and Leonard, I know for sure we researched the one on Williams and it is a absentee owner.
Absentee owner houses are easier.
Yeah.
To get down than.
And it does fit our sort of. Because we know that the, because there, you know, you go to that website that shows who owns it, and they're like, address is California.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think, in my personal opinion, I know the house you talked about on Leonard Street, well, you could almost take the next two or three right next door. You know, uh, and they're lived in, and, so, I think, take some that are more visible to the commu, I mean, to Highway twenty. People coming in, like maybe the apartment, maybe the one at Crossroads, um.
I was thinking kind of the one on Main Street would be probably one of mine.
That one at the door, the one door open counter, or?
No, you're thinking of the one by the vet clinic, that one is another one, it could be ours too. Somebody was living there though, not that long ago.
Yeah, I think there's been one of them. Is the other one further, a little further east then?
It's right east of the funeral. It's east of the old Farberd Island Funeral Home.
There wasn't anybody living in that.
Right.
They probably don't need it too much anymore, since they moved to the. Is there a average price when it takes to get a house down?
It is bad.
Roughly about five thousand dollars.
I know there's another one.
I would, I would say the one I made, so the first one, start with that one maybe. And then if we're dealing with him, you might as well look at that other apartment. Big, oh, apartment, you know.
A little further up, there's another one.
Did you guys get Aaron's house?
No bank did.
The bank did.
Okay, yeah.
It sounds like there's a lot of agreement that the house next to the funeral home might be, uh, the number one priority?
It's just more visible than a lot of the other ones, I think.
Does, does anybody disagree with that? And then he also owns.
Blau apartment.
Should we make that the second one, the Blau apartment, old Blau apartment?
I guess.
Everyone, wanna make that the second one, same owner?
Then number three, I would say, probably the Leonard Street one.
Three is Leonard and uh, third?
Third.
South third?
Yep.
Anyone disagree with that?
Rest of those people see that one getting torn down, maybe they'll doubt it, but you know.
Here you go, move.
The second or third.
Fourth would be the Pronto property, or behind Pronto then?
Was painted here a couple years ago.
Yeah, with that grant thing.
Yeah.
Then the one behind Pronto fourth.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Anyone disagree with that?
Then I would say Gagey's if it falls through. For the sale, yeah. That'll probably eat up our budget for the next two years.
We can get some of it done before July first, that'd be alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
As long as we're talking nuisance properties, if we get the, if we get the um, the grant for, from the DNR for Sunwise. The amount there is sixteen thousand, that we would be on the hook for. Probably fundraising would take care of a lot of that, the city already committed to the idea of it at least. But if we, if we needed to chip in, um, that's a discussion we'd have to have. But that could, that could eat up some budget too.
When will we know on the grant application, or do they know?
April.
You got it sent out already?
April, this April will know.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that and getting it in and everything.
If there's a holdup on the line, or you know, how you rank those, can we shift some in there?
I'm gonna present it to Stacy as a prioritized list.
Okay.
Go after this one if you can, go after this one, if you can't, go after this one, so on so forth. Do we have a number six? That's probably enough right there.
It's enough to work on to start with, I think.
Okay.
We want a motion to make that.
Yes. I'll call for a motion to uh, direct me to, direct Stacy.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Well, there are the old Blau apartments, but Johann Funk owns them now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Frank, can you clarify the motion?
My motion was to have Curtis direct Stacy to follow this list of five properties kind of in order, prioritizing. If one doesn't work, move on to two, three, four, five.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, uh, all opposed say aye, or, I'm sorry, everyone, um, anybody who want in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passed. Next is a discussion about the deed situation with the recent nuisance property, Stacy's not here, so I'm gonna move on from that unless someone wants to talk about it. Uh, let's see, six D, review of Sac City zoning codes, section two, two ten. In your packet are some badly, badly copied, copies of that law. They look like this. The problem with, and, and we're actually reviewing both of them here, and we mentioned fences and pools. We'll start with fences, the problem with two, two six is that in B, there's. A line that says no fence or wall or hedge more than thirty percent solid. Stacy is having a hard time figuring out what to do with that number. Like, how do you tell if a hedge is thirty percent solid? So our challenge would be, if we, if we care, is to figure out wording that would let him not have a problem issuing permits for these things. To be able to. Permit someone to have a fence, wall, or hedge closer than twenty feet of an intersection. Without having to make an arbitrary judgment about what percent solid it is.
Part of the problem with planting hedges is people forget that they grow up. And then they don't plan accordingly, or they don't keep them trimmed.
Right.
And that's usually one of the biggest problems.
What if you just took that for, personally, I'd just like to take that first part out and just say that no wall or hedge. Taller than three feet could be located within twenty feet of the intersection, wouldn't that clear it up? I mean, you don't, I wouldn't want a wall or a hedge anywhere within twenty feet of the intersection anyway. Regardless of the density of it.
I suppose they put the solid there because.
You can see through it.
To see through, um, but I don't know what thirty percent would be.
Yeah, that's wrong.
You know, I don't know what.
The worst case scenario is that you've got something going right up to the however many feet next to the sidewalk that you can get at any intersection, and you can't see around it.
Right.
And so I guess the thirty.
From water tower there.
Yeah, Rose Craft used to live on the corner.
Yeah, yeah, Rose Craft's old house, when you're coming from the east, want to turn.
Yeah, it's terrible.
So I guess the thirty percent was just a, a way to try to. Get a fence in that location without, to allow people to have the fence in that location, but it's not working out on a practical level. So Frank is saying, just take that wording out and say just, no fence.
Do you measure the twenty feet from the middle of the intersection, or where do they measure the twenty feet?
Good question.
I mean, if they're measuring it from the curb, that's different than if you're measuring it from the center of the intersection.
Well, would, how long, how, how wide is parking typically? Ten feet? Six feet?
Probably not quite ten, maybe more like, about six or eight, maybe.
Six or eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. So, we've got fences all over town that are like twelve feet from the intersection, or from the, from the intersection if you went diagonally. We've got a lot of, we've got examples of that. So it's possible then that, and I understand that we're speculating, but then another eight feet would take it out to the center of the intersection, making it twenty? It sounds like that's what's going on?
I, I, I don't know where they're, where they're measuring the twenty feet.
Well.
How do you find that, I mean, how, how long has this been?
So you know, so we're not overthinking it, Stacy's problem with this wording is not the amount of feet from an intersection.
Right, it's the density.
Right.
And I can see that that would be a problem too.
If the, if the, if the number of feet from the intersection is a problem, then he can come back to us.
Well, he would probably know too what they measure.
I think he would have presented that as a problem too, when he asked us.
From the intersection, or from the middle of the street.
Yeah.
And if you outlawed, if you said no fence or, or hedge or anything could be with that distance, maybe you could shorten up the twenty, it wouldn't have to be twenty feet. I mean, if you're leaving a blank space, maybe, maybe twenty feet's more than you need if you're saying you can't put anything between there and the intersection. As opposed to having something that's thirty percent. This see-through.
Well, this can, this can be an ongoing conversation. But it sounds like your suggestion would, would take care of Stacy's uh, desire for a change in that wording.
My only question is, is twenty, would it, would it need to be back that far? If you, if you kept the twenty feet in there, maybe it could be fifteen feet or something, if, if there was an area where you couldn't put anything. Because then it wouldn't block the view from the intersection.
It's about creating a blind spot, right?
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah.
I think Frank's wording sounds good.
Okay, so, so we're clear then?
Maybe just, you want to run it by Stacy?
Stacy recommend that and see what Stacy says, and maybe he can clarify where they measure the twenty feet from.
Okay, so it sounds like, uh, remove. Remove the thirty percent wording. And clarify the, the number of feet, or clarify where it's measured from, or clarify the number of feet, from wherever it's measured.
I'm just curious as to where they measured from, but I would say, you know, if you just took out, so it says no fence, wall, or hedge. Uh, more than three feet high, may be located within twenty feet of any intersection. Just take out the more than thirty percent or.
Oh, and, and don't, don't look for a clarification of twenty feet?
Unless he thinks twenty feet is too far, if we're gonna require it to be blank.
Okay. Oh, Bruce. Hey Bruce. See if twenty feet is too far.
Maybe they want to create a big burden on a property owner if they want to put a fence or something up, but. If you're not gonna allow anything for, for that first part, maybe twenty feet doesn't have to be, maybe doesn't have to be twenty feet back, maybe it could be closer to the intersection, as long as it doesn't block the view.
Well, he's a cop, so I imagine where, where he's looking at it from is like, when you're sitting in your car, if you can see over.
I'm guessing that twenty feet, however they're measuring it now, twenty feet he figures, or this, at one point in time they figured that that was enough for you to see if there was traffic coming. I mean, and then they put the thirty percent density or thirty percent solid in there.
Right. Okay, so, I'll clarify that with, with Stacy and we'll, we'll come back to this again next month.
Okay.
But we're all in agreement that removing the thirty percent wording is in stone?
Or if he has some concerns about, I mean, I'm thinking.
If he wants to adjust the twenty feet.
I, I'm thinking about Vanon Valley, you know, that fence on, um, when you're headed.
Yeah, when you come down and you're turning.
If that, if that was solid, you know, that would, that would be, you'd have a hard time seeing vehicles coming from, you know, uh, town. So I'm wondering.
Three feet. That's taller than three feet.
And it's taller than three feet. I mean, that's a pretty.
That's a good point, yeah, that would.
I mean, you, um.
But I mean, you can still see through it, so you can still see if there's somebody coming.
Because there's, because there's a percentage of transparency.
Yes, yeah, so, I'm not certain we need to look, I think we need to kind of, you wouldn't want that to be a solid fence.
No, I wouldn't.
But if it was three feet high, it would be okay, but then you're not gonna have three foot fences, it's not gonna serve any purpose. So you are probably gonna want to have some part of transparency in it, but then how are you gonna determine it?
What about wording that says? What about wording that said something like three feet high, getting specific again, but like three feet high and, or able to see through it substantially?
And that's subject to interpretation.
I know, I know, I know.
I think we need to visit with Stacy and see what, what he would like to see.
And bring up that example to him.
Yeah, those couple of examples, so we can see what, how he would handle it.
Bring up Vanon's Valley. Okay. Yeah, as long as we're still on the as long as we're, oh, no, we're not. Okay. I'll deal with it during board forum. Does anyone else have any thoughts about that law? Before we move on to swimming pools? Nothing, we'll move on to swimming pools in residential districts. I am, I have to admit, I do not know what exactly the problem was. The couple of conversations we had, seems like Stacy sort of downplayed it a little bit the second time we talked about it. Does anyone remember, have a memory of that conversation?
I think it has something to do with the fence, you know, some people getting in it or something like that, doesn't it?
Okay.
There's, you know, talk about some of the pools that did not have fences around them.
Something like that.
Maybe, I don't, I don't.
For safety reasons, maybe?
Yeah.
I don't know, I haven't heard that many pools in town.
Well, the law already calls for a permanently enclosed fence.
For a permanent pool though.
For a permanent pool.
The temporary pools are supposed, oh, is it permanent pool, one that is in, in ground or what? I mean, how?
Well, for sure, that's permanent.
Yeah, but I mean, how about?
But there's some people that build decks around them.
Or be permanent that they don't take them down each year?
Maybe that's E, should not, it says it should not be subject to the fence requirements. It should accept all other provisions.
So it sounds like was there a setback issue too about?
Temporary fencing there.
Was there also a setback issue, uh, concern that he had about being located too close to someone else's property between houses?
I don't remember that one.
No, I don't remember that.
Okay. I'm probably making that up in my own head then.
You might have brought it up later.
Well, I think then, I don't know, does anyone feel like we wanna get him in the room to tell us what, to clarify exactly what his problem is with the, the pools?
I think so.
Yes.
He needs to be clarified.
Does anyone else have any more discussion about the pool law? If not, we'll move on to seven new business, A, discussion about the two thousand fifteen beautiful ca- beautification contest. Last year, we managed to get one person to enter, so it wasn't a complete disaster. There's some opinions about how good of a, how good of an entrant it was, how
How much improvement there was.
How much improvement there was. But she did follow the rules. She did call beforehand and before the proj- the project started and after. What do we think about doing it again in two thousand fifteen?
I think we should try it. I think it was a good idea.
As far as that goes, encourage people to try to do something.
Yeah.
It seems like, from the inside of committee on that one, and Mickey can probably back this up, it, it was just a first year. People just getting aware of it.
I think, I think several other ones that have inquired about it, already had their project done, so they didn't have the before and after picture. So I mean, I think there was some interest in it, but they didn't understand the rules.
And there were about five people.
Start talking about it now, put it in the paper, that kinda thing.
And make, emphasize that they need to have their pictures, yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like we need a, let's see, do a press release?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
That we are beginning the, the contest up again? The dates we had last year were from May one?
April.
Maybe April or May until August. And then we called it, we called it a day at the end of August, then voted on it in November, in September. Does that sound right to everybody? Should we have a limit on, like that again? Or should we just start from now until a date?
April to August doesn't sound too bad. You know, there's gonna be some days in April that it's gonna be too cold to do some things, but.
Well, yeah, but people are, people are planning their, people are planning their projects now.
Well, yeah, but we can get ahead of that with a press release and, you know.
I don't think you're gonna see much done until April. They're planning it now. If you get the press releases out and stuff like that. Let them know how to enter, what the rules are.
What if we did this time a written rule that we handed out with permits?
If they get permits.
Well, if they get
I mean, if it's something that they do that they need a permit for.
Yeah, but it would make those people aware.
I mean, yeah. But there's some that'll do the improvements and won't need permits probably.
So we would have to, it would have to, we would have to rely on Stacy to do that.
What timeframe are you talking again, versus April through when?
Well, that's, that's what I wanna have a discussion about. Um, there were people that have indicated to me that they would, there could be things that are being done all year round, if it's warm enough, if, if it's a mild enough winter. We're too late to include any sort of December, January, February work this year.
What exactly did she do last year?
She neutered it.
Okay.
I think she did want something else besides that.
She cleaned up her yard, which is kind of one of our things that we wanted. Kinda cleaned up the trashiness of her yard. And she stained her whole walkway thing.
Okay.
Hmm, she did quite a bit, really.
She lives south of, sure.
Single lady?
South of Linda.
Yeah, Susan Bash.
Yes.
There you go.
Yep. Next to Giddies, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So I guess we would want to just do the same thing again?
What did we do last year, April to August?
Do we, do we start later than April even, or was it April?
I think we're talking about it earlier this year, so, so should we get started?
Yeah, we started later last year.
Yeah. I'd say April to August is good.
April one to August thirty?
Yeah.
There's a lot of nice weather.
And then we can decide in September.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of nice weather though in September, as far as still working on projects, maybe we should give them another month, September.
Well, that's fine.
Through September.
Through September and then make the decision in October?
October, November, we got plenty of time to make a decision.
That's fine.
Well, we could just run right through October and do it in November. That would for sure catch everybody.
That's fine.
October thirty?
April through October?
Yes.
Thirty-one. April one through October thirty-one. And then we decide at the meeting in November.
I think we could pretty well keep the same rules we had last year, as long as everybody knows what the rules are.
I don't even think I remember what they are.
The guides.
We wanted, we wanted it to, um, we, to contact us, have a, call us out to take the picture, so that it would be us certifying it. And then call us for the final picture, so that we could compare. That was the, that was the main thing. There weren't any financial things, there was, there were only date.
Any limitations in what they had to do to their property?
We didn't, we didn't impose any limitations, but last year's winner, you know, I'm sensing that maybe we do want to impose some limitations. That's probably a discussion we could, we could have right now to sort of figure out what that would be if we want them.
Okay, the only thing about going through October, like, you know, people will do all this work and make a yard all pretty. By the time October gets there, all the leaves are falling and it's gonna be all, I don't know.
I think they're thinking more, when we did October, more of the, like, the construction type property fixes of what you guys are thinking of. And you are thinking, I think, more along the lines of the beautification part of it, like the flowers, the plants, the shrubs, the, that kinda thing.
Yeah, that's true.
Kind of like the men's club type thing, votes on.
Yeah.
I mean, there's two ways to look at it, I guess.
But as planning zoning, we are kind of, we are kind of more aiming at like, hey, there's a reward if you clean up your yard. Not the leaves, but the junk.
Yeah. But they'll be wanting to get up like their, how many decorations in their yards and if we can, I guess as long as we can overlook things like that.
Bruce?
I, as long as you have them tell you when it's done.
Right.
You come take the picture whenever they want it done.
Well, that's true.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Well, that's how, and that already is in the rules.
They contact you when they, this is the beginning, they contact you saying, my project is done, you show up and take the picture. So if they did a yard beautification thing and it looks wonderful on July tenth, they call us.
Yeah, if you can clarify that in the rules.
But, you know, when they call us when the project is finished, we will take a picture of it at that time.
Well, actually, we did have that. There wasn't a, there wasn't a
If their project is a beautification one, you see it when it's beautiful in the photograph. If it's tearing down a block of houses and it looks a whole lot better, it doesn't matter when it happens.
Good point. Thank you.
Call prior, we take the picture.
Okay, here's a copy of the rules from last year.
Oh, great. Let's just, let's just go ahead and review those. Can I, can I read those? This is more complicated than I remember. Contact us to take the before photo. Call president, I guess it'd be me now, email, our email, private messages on Facebook, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, cleaning up trash, doing major registration, doesn't matter as long as we're, as long as you're improving the appearance of your property. Contact us when you're done, and we'll come take the after photo. Sit back and wait for, September is when we call it a day, last year. Eligibility, must live within city limits. Enter anytime prior to the end date, like if they have a project, they can get done one day. Good luck. No limit on size, uh, no limit to the size of the project. Costs nothing to enter. Projects are limited to exterior projects only. Any project, including projects you are doing to help Sac City Citizen Group are eligible. Probably take that out because they're sort of not active at all. The Citizens in Action, CIA. Uh, renters within city limits are eligible also, as long as pro, pros, projects follow within terms of their rental lease agreements. Uh, group entries are allowed, but the prize will only be awarded to a single person representing the group. And then it'll be up to them to decide how to distribute that amongst the group.
I think I might move it back to September, just my opinion. That's six months. If you start a project in April, any kind of a project, home project, like your yard or whatever, don't you think you probably have it done by September? I don't know, just my thought, but. But, for the sport.
Well, we've got two proposed dates right now, October thirty-first and September, or, August thirty-first. Does anyone feel strongly, you obviously feel strongly about the, about the August?
Or September, September.
Okay, cause last year we called, we called, we voted in September.
But you're still saying go through September, but vote August.
Go through September instead of October.
September.
September would be six months, April, May, June, July, August, September, that'd be six months.
September thirty-one?
I don't know, that's just an opinion.
I kinda feel that way too.
Or what you guys.
Well, does, does anybody have any strong feelings about either date? September thirty-one or Sep- or Oc- thirty, or October thirty-one? Susan?
What happens if somebody has a major project, runs into a problem, and doesn't get it done, so he's just, he or she is just out of the
Yeah, they're just out.
Yeah.
The end date, we could probably clarif- we could probably add a clarification that the end date has to be, their finish time has to be by the end of the contest. Well, right now, the strongest, the only person that feels strongly is, uh, is advocating in October, I'm sorry, September thirty end date. No, in October thirty-one end date, to, and then to vote in September, right? Did I have that straight, or did I have that backwards?
Yeah, September, vote October.
I'm sorry, of course.
And then September, vote in October.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And then September, vote October. I don't know.
Well, then that's a, that's how we'll draft up the, uh, we'll change, we'll change the rules to be updated and reflect those dates.
Did we, did we donate a hundred dollars of our budget money towards that, or what?
We didn't donate anything of our budget money last year. We, we got a donation from, uh, the mayor, and we, and we got a donation.
We had a donation from her, but I didn't remember if we put any money into it, or what were we, what were we gonna have for her eyes? I don't remember.
It's just however much cash we can collect from people to, to encourage it.
Is that what we did last year? I don't remember.
That's what we did last year.
What did we end up with?
We ended up with, um, I bet Bruce knows.
Three fifty.
The Community Foundation donated two hundred and fifty dollars toward it. Asked them, and I think it was a prize of three fifty.
Yeah.
Some barbed donated a hundred.
Cause I know you barbed donated a hundred, I think.
A hundred out of her own pocket? Wow.
Well, and part of the deal too is, um, at the, at the, at, at the end of the contest, when we announce the winner, we also announce the people who donated. So there's a little bit of And then we would do the same thing.
Yeah.
Go and try to collect. Try to take donations from people for it.
Like, like, and did we talk about it last year, like going to different businesses and see if they wanted to?
We did, but it fell apart.
Yeah.
We didn't actually, we didn't actually have a go-out-and-collect day. We got the three fifty and
We were happy. That, oh boy.
Is that, is that our plan of attack this year too, then? Ask the foundation for some money?
No, no. I don't, I don't know if they're gonna, I mean, I, we can, we can ask just everybody and see what we can come up with. It'd be nice to spread the, uh, paint around a little bit. Do we wanna put a cap, by the way, on the prize? Like, if we collected this much, then call it a day?
Did we talk about trying, maybe having more than one winner last year if we had, had more entries?
We kinda did in committee. Yeah, we kinda did.
And that would kinda determine how much money we could use for prizes, depending on, if we had more than one entry.
Well, how we express it in the press release was, we were going to, uh, there was no, there was no set prize amount, we were just going to collect, or we were gonna take donations for it and then, and then award those donations at the end of the year. I'm not sure, as an organization, if we can hold on to money. We don't have our own fund, so if we got more money than we used, it would go into the city general fund. So, we wanna use just whatever we've got, which makes it hard to put a limit on it unless we limit ourselves. If we just say, we're gonna stop at five hundred.
Then are you gonna have a first and second place, or a first and, you're gonna have one winner, you're gonna have two winners, you're gonna have three winners?
Well, it seems like the more winners we, we have, the more people would be, the more people would wanna sign up or compete for something.
Until you know how much money you got to give away. I mean, if you only get two hundred dollars, you can divide it up three ways probably and have much of a prize.
Yeah.
Right, but if you, say you ended up at five hundred or six hundred dollars, then
Bruce?
See, I know with the Community Foundation See, I know with the Community Foundation, even if they don't donate, would be willing to receive the monies. Which would make them eligible to be written off rather than just giving straight to the city.
Well, and that is how we did it last year.
That's how you did it. So, if there were a carryover, that could carry over in the foundation.
You guys could carry a fund for us, or a balance for us?
Yes.
Well, so, first, second, and third place. We would have to commit to some minimal amount that would, you know, make sense.
Well, you've kinda set the precedent already for three fifty for first, I mean, you don't really wanna go any less than that first place again, do you? I don't know.
I don't know. If we were to just come out and say, hey, this year, first place is a hundred, second place is fifty, and third is twenty five. I'd commit us to raising a hundred seventy five. Or if we came out with a percentage of, if we announced a percentage collected. Fifty percent of everything collected goes to first place, et cetera, et cetera.
That'd probably be a safer way to do it.
Okay.
The percentages.
Yeah.
Just because you don't know how much you're gonna get.
Right.
But maybe if you put something out there, um, donations can be made to.
Donation can be made, and remind you, that's tax exempt, right?
Yes, tax exempt.
That's a five oh one C three, so yes, it is tax exempt.
Okay.
And they, and the address of that would be to take it to the Iowa State Bank. Directed either to Steve Irwin or Annette.
Bruce, should we come before the, uh, before the foundation again to, to get permission, or is that already, do you guys already have a fund for us?
We meet Thursday morning, I'd be happy to bring it up for you if you want.
I'm, I'm not, I'm just not remembering how that was left.
I'm not sure either, but I know that we, I mean, we do, we do pass through stuff for that without. Too much concern.
Okay.
But I mean, that would be, if it's purely a pass through account, I don't think it would be an issue. But we meet Thursday morning at seven AM, if you wanna stop by or if you wanna shoot me an email to remind me to do it. Call me at six fifty five to see are you out of bed yet or something like that.
Anyone wanna go to the meeting Thursday at seven AM to make sure our interests are represented?
Go for it, Chris.
Anyone else? Well, okay. I'll show up Thursday at seven and just make sure we have a, a pass through and it's okay with them.
We can decide on prize money, I guess, later, I mean, see what, see what's collected.
Okay, so tasks, let's, um, we've already got the rules basically done. Anyone feel like writing a press release?
Do we have the one from last year? Did we do one last year?
No, it was kept on my computer and that computer crashed, crashed, crashed. Although we could probably look up an old copy of the.
In the newspaper or anything.
Sun or go back in the archives on the news and figure it out. Okay, I'll bring a, I'll bring a modified, I'll just bring that and we'll modify it. Last year, our committee was going to put up flyers in the, uh, usual places. And we didn't end up doing it because our flyer person moved out of town. And we didn't, didn't do it.
Did we, um, did we put anything or talk about putting anything in the, um, with the bill, you know, the city bills when they got moved out, like with the calendar?
Didn't, we've got enough time to actually get that done this time.
Maybe a good way to get it, have her put it in the newsletter, Winston's out or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that, is that quarterly?
Oh.
Comes in with your bills, is it quarterly?
We just got one, huh? We lost any of that was.
I don't remember.
About a month ago?
Yeah, usually come out late in the month.
Unless we did, just as a separate flyer, did they do that?
No, it was with the utility bills, I think.
It was just, we got, we got a paragraph in their utility bill.
Their newsletter, you know.
But we can't do that.
How often does that come out though?
But that's.
Quarterly?
Is it quarterly?
Is it?
If it's quarterly though, we won't be able to get it in there in April, will we?
And then they have it already printed up.
January, March, April, March.
We just got one a couple of months ago.
Yeah, they commit on March first, you have to have it in by the month before.
So that's too late then.
But maybe it's not too late.
Maybe we might have support.
We might know a few people, you know. Especially if it's small enough, just a little paragraph saying the same thing it did last year. So far, what we've covered is we are, we've got our, our rule alteration with our dates. We're adding a line to say, finish, finish your project by contest end. Everything else is still the same. We're going to, we're going to establish a, a fund with a, with the foundation Thursday at seven. And just rehashing the press release and, and, and city bill thing that we did last time. Does anyone else have any ideas for this? It'd be nice if we could establish a committee to just spend a day soliciting around town for prize money.
I could, I could try and do some of that.
Do you think we guys, do you think we should? Or would that be weird to do?
Well, we could ask a few people and find out how, what their action is, I guess. Cause like you said, then we're gonna say who, who did contribute, that gives them attention.
Could we bring it up at Chamber Coffees and mention it there and just kinda field people out first?
Oh, Chamber Newsletter.
And we did that last year too. Is that being done?
I think Bobby might be doing it.
Laura's doing it.
Laura is doing it?
Chamber Coffees. What else can we solicit money without having to go door to door?
The banks are usually pretty good, state banks usually really good. Outdone, I don't know so much about citizens or American National, but wouldn't hurt to ask the banks.
Well, rather than have it just be a, we might or we might not deal, do you guys have any solid interest in? Does anyone wanna volunteer to be on a committee to just go around and solicit ten or fifteen places? And, um, see if we can get some money raised for the prize.
We have to do that pretty quickly too, don't we?
Yeah. Probably before the next meeting, so we know what we're talking about, we could still take donations as it becomes. Known, but it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to know for sure that we're, we're sitting on some money.
Who are you thinking of like asking, are you thinking all the downtown businesses, or what are you thinking?
Well, I mean. The committee, whoever it is, would just go to probably the banks. Probably coordinate with getting to Chamber Coffee to sort of put it out.
I can bring it up at Chamber Coffees.
Okay, maybe the door to door, maybe just the door to door in the downtown businesses, see if there's any interest, cause it's sort of an ad. Or at least they're, you know, they're. Being associated with something positive in the community.
The ones that would be donating the money, would we want to promote that throughout the contest? That might be, you know, better than at the end, because I'm thinking like maybe we went to Margals or Baumgart's or places like that. That have products and supplies that people can use to do their home improvement, so if we're, if we're kinda promoting them throughout the contest. That might help people. You know, maybe that helps them, cause people are gonna go there and buy their products and things like that, I wonder.
It sounds like you've got some pretty good ideas about who to approach.
Yeah, I just thought of it.
Castings.
So, do you guys want me to ask the foundation then Thursday morning?
Yeah.
I'm kinda hesitant to. Ask them before anyone else. Because last year they pres- they provided the seed money and it sort of stopped there. I'd like to come to them with a few more people on board before we ask them again.
I don't think you need to.
You don't think that'll be a problem?
We're not, we were, you weren't gonna ask them for the money though, were you?
Well, that's why I'm asking, I'm gonna be there Thursday morning.
I mean, ask us that.
Let me just tell them any donation that they might wanna make would be appreciated.
Yeah.
Not really asking.
I guess, I guess what you could say was, last year, we received donations for our community beautiful cat- vacation project. Would it be okay to do the same again? There will be somebody on that board who said, I believe we, we donated to that, and it may come up that way too. But just, I mean, just say last year you allowed us to receive donations for this, would it be okay for that to happen again? And the seed money may come from there again, I don't know.
Well, it sounds like that maybe is of course we do wanna follow, and I am gonna be there Thursday morning. Okay? So we've got Teresa going to the Chamber, we've got Curtis going to the Foundation. Anyone else wanna chip in and visit some places and ask?
I'll visit a few places. What's my deadline?
Tomorrow. I would say everybody just. See how should we keep this updated without it being a meeting? I guess we'll kinda deal with that with the next thing, we'll just make sure that we stay updated, so we're not asking anyone twice. If you ask someone you're successful or unsuccessful, share it with me.
Okay.
I'll talk with the state bank. I'll talk, I'll talk just with the state bank.
The state, okay.
I kinda have an in there.
Wonder why?
It sounds like we got a good start there, does anyone have any other fundraising ideas or ideas related to the rules? Frank, do you think we need motions for all of that?
I'll put it in the minutes that we talked about it, I don't, I haven't really taken any official action on anything really.
Okay, sounds legit. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to seven, new business, approval of future electronic meeting methods. There was sort of an emergency that we had last month, um, that we could have used a decision on pretty quickly, and we weren't able to. And we didn't have the means to coordinate to have a legal electronic meeting. So I put it on the agenda this time just so we could not have that problem in the future, we could maybe hash out what we wanna do. Some preliminary thoughts I had is that everybody at least has an email address. And that would allow the public to participate via email too. But I haven't, I haven't done any checking past that, like with the city, if they have any approved methods. Do you guys have any guidance on the council for what your preferred method of doing is?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Because then, you know, as I thought about that, it, there are people that don't have email. There're probably very few of them, but it would exclude them. Kinda not sure how to get around that. Other than just. If we were going to have an emergency meeting, we could on the, we could on the. Agenda have them contact me, the wording could be that they contact me, I'd give them a number for ways to contact me. And we'd figure out how to accommodate anyone that wants to participate. That's the, uh, that's the only thoughts I have about that, does anyone else have any thoughts about how to have an electronic meeting?
That'd probably be the easiest way, I mean.
You mean because we were trying to do that one when we weren't really supposed to and you had fairly good rules of why? That, um, that if it, cause it wasn't only open to the public and it should be open to the public to do this?
Well, there wasn't enough notice, it wasn't open to the public, there were a number of problems with it. And we could have over, I don't, I don't know if we could have overcome it even as an emergency way, because we don't have a procedure for doing that. And the rules, the chapter twenty one and twenty two rules are pretty. Pretty gray area on that. But it seems like what we'd have to do is have an established way so that we all know what we're doing. And have a, a way to work with people to, to get them to, to get them to be able to witness the meeting if they want to. You know, just a member of the public.
How would they know about it?
Well, it'd be the normal noticing things, we'd, we'd have to hang a, we'd have to hang a notice, we'd have to send a notice to all the media that have requested it. And then we'd have to, um, hang a notice, I don't know, I guess down here. I, it's not really gonna center here if it's electronic, but you know, it would, it would cover our bases. And then the other thing is, meetings have to be done within three hours in Iowa, so we, if we're attending the meeting, we would have to be paying attention to our emails. And, and get our business done in that three hours, and just, just being outside of it wouldn't be legal.
So how far ahead of time the notice has to be done?
Twenty four hours.
Okay, twenty four hours.
Do we post notice, do we post notice now anywhere of our meetings? Yeah, we have to. Where? Here.
Is this the only place that's posted?
It's the only place we're required, cause it's the physical location, and we also posted to all the media that have requested it.
Which is?
Uh, me, uh, SAC News, SAC Sun. And there might be a third, but there are also some people that aren't on the, aren't on the commission that get noticed. Basically, anyone that wants notice, they put notice in, they, they give us the notice that they want to receive notices and then they get them. We're required to give it to them.
But SAC Sun never posts anything about.
No, that's what I was wondering.
No, but they get the notice, so that they can come cover it if they want.
So if you post your notice down here twenty four hours before you're gonna meet. And you notify the news media or whoever that you're gonna meet, what other obligation do you have?
None. That's it.
So, do we need any rules or regulations to govern that?
But the last time it wasn't within that period is what he's saying.
What, I, I'm not sure what you're talking about, what time, what, what meeting?
When, what was it even on, I don't know.
There was a, uh, Bruce wanted to get an approval to.
Paint.
Paint, to get the, the paint.
To write a grant for, for paint, but he had to have it in like within three days or something, and by the time we had a actual meeting, it wouldn't have given him, given him time. But we kinda did it anyway, but, um, so we were, we thought we could maybe just do a lifetime meeting and email everybody.
I guess that, I didn't get those emails, so I didn't know anything about it.
Well, I did get some emails lately for, for some things that happened too.
Yes.
So, I think we emailed Annette to ask her to send it out to everybody about. If, how people felt if they approved or disapproved of Bruce doing that, but you didn't ever get that one?
No, and I didn't get any emails today about today's meeting until Jim called me today and said, do we have a meeting tonight? And I said, well, I don't know, I haven't gotten any agenda or any minutes or anything.
Well, yeah, and I didn't, I didn't get emailed on today's meeting either.
From Annette either at all.
I guess.
I got mine.
But some people did, yeah.
So then I stopped down to the city office of, right after lunch, and visited with Annette, and she had sent it out at nine oh five this morning or something. And she had sent it out at nine oh five this morning or something like that. And my name is in the group, but she looked at what was sent and my name wasn't on there as one of the senders. So that's probably why I didn't get it last time either. But if Jim hadn't brought it to my attention, I didn't know anything about it.
I'll check with Annette and make sure.
Well, I did and then she sent, she sent out that email from Stacy this afternoon and I got that.
I didn't get that.
And I let her know.
And I didn't get it.
And I let her know that I did get it and so she said, okay, then I think I have it fixed.
So you might wanna visit with her if you didn't.
She put you on to Q lock.
Yeah, sorry Curtis.
Okay, so we'll clarify that. Then I think.
Well, I'm still confused about the, the electronic meeting. What's the issue here?
Um, the issue was that we, if we, if we have the ability to do an emergency meeting, it would be a lot easier to get a quorum electronically than to try and get the building empty and get everyone notified and get everyone coming down here. Especially if we're just doing one vote, like, like directing Bruce to do the grant on our behalf.
But if we post the notices twenty-four hours ahead like we're doing now and notify the people that wanna be notified when we're gonna meet, unless they have, unless they're, have access to all of our emails, they're not gonna know what took place anyway.
Well, they would get, right, you're right about that.
So what's?
It, that's a really good point. And this was, this was the opportunity to, to have the emergency meeting on a Saturday. Would've been, it, that would've been the soonest we could've done the meeting. Like if we had gotten a notice out by noon on Friday. So it would've been hanging in the, it would've been hanging here at the city for the four hours before they closed. Or we could've put it up, if we were to put it on the outside window so people could see it from, without having to come in, that would, that wouldn't do our purposes. But then we wouldn't have to actually get the key, be able to get in, you know, hunt, hunt down Adam on a, at a conference somewhere in Des Moines or whatever and, and meet physically if we don't have to. Or we could also, we could also certainly have someone participate electronically too. And there could be a physical person here if we were able to.
That's the part I don't understand, I guess.
I think it has to do like an open meeting law or something like that.
Well, I know the open meeting law, but all you're required to do for the open meeting law is to post your notice twenty-four hour, wherever your official notices are posted.
But to hold the meeting.
There wasn't, everybody was included in this email that went out. And if, there was no twenty-four hour notice that we were gonna vote on this thing to send in the paint.
Well, I mean, if you, if you're, if you're gonna meet earlier than twenty-four hours, you're in violation of the open meeting law regardless of how you do it.
Right, and that's what Curtis was saying that day when this email went out.
So an email wouldn't have done any good anyway.
No, an email to notice is fine.
But you gotta notify the public twenty-four hours.
Right, and that, and that would be the thing hanging down here on the door of twenty-four hours. We can slap that up whether they're, whether the office is open or not.
But I'm saying in this last situation, I mean.
What, what we could've done in the last situation is came down and, and slapped a notice on the door for twenty-four hours. Emailed the media and, and everybody, um, to let them know that we're having a meeting. And then we could've met electronically. At noon, you would go check your email and we would, we would officially ask the question and take a vote.
Well, that's the part that's confusing because if you're doing this because of open meeting law, no one else is gonna be sitting in on the meeting by email to know what's going on anyway.
But they would let us know that they want to be a party to the group email.
And somebody found out.
So then we'd have to include them in our group email.
Right.
With our vote decision.
So anybody that wants to would just go on to the reply all this.
Know how everybody voted. That's what, that's all they really find out. That's all they really know.
That's what it's boiling down to, yes.
Yeah. And they would have a, they would have a chance also to write an email and, and voice their opinion and their thoughts on, on anything we were voting on. Probably, probably not gonna come up again.
Yeah.
I mean, the emergencies that we have to deal with are very, very few and far between. But this would give us a method for, for dealing with it if it did. Bruce?
What some, I know what some public bodies have done is they will, to satisfy the public meetings, they're doing an email thing. They will have the chair or someone with a computer in a room that is open to the public and everybody else. And so if somebody wants to come, they show up there, you share what the email responses are, it becomes a public meeting with everyone else on, as an electronic presence.
Well, that's a really good idea. I mean, that's why I wanted to have this discussion tonight to see if, you know, that could be a thing that we tell them to do if they don't, they don't have any other way, I'll be sitting.
You can be sitting here or sitting in a library or sitting at some public location and this had, this, and from the time, from twelve to one o'clock, everybody will be able to respond, they would also have a chance for input and you could email that to the other people who were there. You would have your electri- you, you, I mean, that that, that's one way that I know some organizations have covered the open meeting law.
That would have to be part of your notice of your meeting then, that
Yes.
That where the location was where they could view the vote.
It means one person has to be someplace that's accessible.
So do we wanna make that just part of our rules? One person has to be probably president, has to be somewhere public? And they can read the, the emails?
And you might, I would, you might wanna check with the city attorney just to make sure what you're doing.
That's what I'd suggest too, see what they suggest.
But I mean, I, I've heard of other groups that do that. I mean, that's, that, that covers your concern that not everyone has email. If they really are so inclined to want to be a part and there's so many people that show up at all of our meetings anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we still have to be able to accommodate. Still have to be able to allow them to if they want it.
Do we have a list of everybody's email addresses and phone numbers and stuff like that?
Somewhere. I mean, Annette has them all.
Yeah, she has them all.
So it sounds like I'm gonna come back next month with a recommendation from the city attorney how to do this.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so we're not gonna vote on anything tonight then? Do you want, do you wanna vote directing me to do that?
No, I'll just put it in the minutes that you're going to.
Fair enough. Does anyone else have any more questions or, uh, discussion about this topic?
You're the computer person.
I only wish that were true. We'll move on to, uh, seven, no, eight, board forum. Does anyone have any, uh, open discussion about anything that they've noticed around town pertaining to planning and zoning?
Well, yes, one thing. Um, you know, we, we talk about, you know, the buildings and all that kinda stuff. I've noticed a lot of places where like there's fences that, or there could be fences that would help make things look better. And I'm wondering if that's something we could ever someday put some of our money towards, it's just to help redo a fence. Like behind where the Freedom Rock is, you know, they have that little, the Freedom Rock and there's that little brick building and then that fence behind there is really ugly. You know, if we had like a nice looking fence or something there, it would really improve the look of it. Or, and I know we talked before about when you come in from the, on M fifty-four on the north end of town, you know, how that's kinda ugly there where that long guy has all this stuff. I don't know, something to work out something with somebody like that to see if we could help put in some kinda fence.
And see that ugly place. Which one?
Huh? Oh, well.
More Osborne, is it Osborne keeps all the stuff?
That stuff back there.
I don't remember who it is.
Someone else or where'd he go?
What do you mean downtown here?
Right by where Sunwise is.
Yeah.
Oh, that guy. The Ellie. That you guys sold him.
Yes.
I can't think of his name.
I'm drawing a blank on it too.
Osborne, is it?
Willie, Willie Osborne.
Is it Willie? Okay, then I'm right. Okay, then I'm right. I thought that's what it was. And unfortunately, if Sunwise comes down, you'd be able to see it even better.
Well, yeah, but then he won't have a wall to stack everything up against. That'll be gone.
That's true, maybe he'll move.
Then it all moves up against him.
He keeps adding stuff in there.
But just, I meant, just like instead of like paint, you know, like we're doing the paint thing, people can do the paint thing. Maybe someday we could just do, say, well, you could have money to improve your fence.
Well, it sounds like what you're saying is take our fifteen thousand dollars and instead of spending it on litigation, spend it to just give them money to build a fence?
Maybe.
But then you're opening up a whole can of worms there.
You mean us, like us seven getting together with some hammers?
Well, not with our hammers and nails, but hiring someone to do it.
Or that's private property. I mean, that's gonna open it up to us.
I don't know, it was just a thought. You said board forum, so I thought I'd throw something out there.
Well, and those projects would qualify under our fix-up.
I was gonna say, how about our revolving loan fund?
Well, yeah, or before and after, I mean, property improvements.
Or the property improvement thing or?
If they're cited.
Yeah.
Might be some justice too.
Don't let it get so bad, you have to be cited.
Yeah. Have you guys been through the park, the city park, um, the campgrounds area? If you look towards those back of those houses, how much junk?
Oh.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Like in the, the hill and stuff?
Haven't been through there. Is it, it must be pretty bad?
Well, it's real visible now because there's no leaves on the trees. You can see through there, you can see.
Yeah, there's no grass or anything like that. You can really see people throwing stuff.
That's kinda bad there on, is that Inger still or Dunkum? What's that, what's the?
Do you want this back?
Yes, I do.
Back when you go, oh god, like you're in the whole page list.
Do you wanna copy these rules?
I sure would, I sure would.
North of town, yep.
Do they exist electronically?
By the Howard Activities Center.
If not, I can take a picture right now.
Okay, if you wanna take a picture now.
I'll do, assume some use of it.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Go down to the cemetery and look too behind them. Stuff there all the time too.
Bruce?
I just wanted to give you an update that I did get the Paint Iowa Beautiful grant done and turned in. Hopefully the announcement should come in near the end of March. And if it is awarded, yeah, I mean, it, it, the discussions that we took last time, it's gonna be a little more hands-on than saying here, take some paint, please do something with it, but hopefully that will be happening. Maybe another thing that might directly or indirectly affect this board. The SAC County Hometown Pride Project. Hopefully we will have a director or a community coach available by the beginning of April with luck. I'm not holding my breath, but that's a hope anyway. But each city in the county will be, is required to set up a Hometown Pride Committee. That committee is pretty well established now for SAC City and believe it or not, it was almost exclusively populated by people who contacted me to volunteer to be on it.
Wow.
Um, and that, that committee is, it's, it's a pretty nice cross-section. It doesn't necessarily have to be people that are in city limits. Um, Kim Adams, Tammy Vine, Charlie Crump, Cricket Donovan, Julie Cricket Donovan, Brent Dre, Eric Youngiger. And, and I'm on it because the county, the representative of the county one is supposed to be back on it. So it's a seven-person committee. But the three primary areas that the county has actually talked about trying to hire the coach for are economic development, okay. That's kind of a no-brainer. But one of the big ones is community beautification, the exact things that you're, that you're tying into here. There, you know, sometimes I have, in my office I have a sign that says, for God so love the world, we didn't get a committee. But, um, that being said, I think this is another committee maybe kinda doing the same things that you're doing. But the community coach will be available to work with community beautification projects. And at some point, maybe this body and the, and the city Hometown Pride Committee could meet together and do some brainstorming about things about how do we encourage people to get rid of derelict properties? How do we encourage people to build a fence so we don't see their feces that's living behind their house? You know, and that I think is something that I just wanted to make you all aware of, that this is something that will be happening. It is happening. We did offer the coach position to a person. He turned it down because he didn't understand it was a contract position and thought it would have benefits with it. Even though it was advertised as a contract position, he turned it down. Well, so that's all right. And we interviewed another person and it just was not a good fit. So the applications are open. I did get one today that looks like it's pretty good. Who's had some phenomenal experience in revitalizing downtown areas. Both physically getting businesses in there. I mean, I think some things could pretty be exciting to get someone from the outside of the county coming in, working, you know, an expert is sometimes somebody who's fifty miles away. And that's part of what this grant is, but the grant is basically an influx of four hundred thousand dollars over the next five years. And, uh, so I mean, that's, I mean, part of that's, part of that's a match and part of that is, is not. I mean, that, that's through Keep Iowa Beautiful. They're the same people that do the, the Paint Iowa Beautiful grant. There are other grants that they do have that you might want to consider looking at sometimes just for beautification projects. It would be keeping, you know, in here. And any direction you have, maybe we can work together with a, you know, Hometown Pride Committee and, and planning and zoning because there is some overlap in that. But, uh, the advantage of the Hometown Pride is it's a little more overreaching. I mean, it, it looks at all sorts of things rather than just, you know, just community beautification or, you know, how those things work out. But any input that you have would certainly be most welcome for things that you would like to see SAC City doing in terms of, you know, they, I think so much, from having been on planning and zoning, so much of the time is spent on zoning and enforcement that we forget the other half of the title.
Planning.
You know, how can we plan for the future of the city to really be forward? And I think that's what the Hometown Pride is about. But if you have, you know, a, a future meeting, if you can come up with, you know, any things that you want, I, you know, feel free to contact me. I don't mean to be intruding, um, I'm here not as a city council person, but as a Hometown Pride person saying, you know, let's do that. And also here to tell you that your grant was submitted from the Paint Iowa Beautiful requesting twenty-five gallon of paint. I'd be surprised if they came up with that, but you know.
Would you like to be on the agenda to have a serious talk about how we might work together?
Sure.
As a representative of the, of Hometown Pride?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Because we would, well, I'm not speaking for, I'm sorry, but it sounds like if you could give us some ideas for how we could support you, that, that would be in our mission, that would be helpful.
I mean, one of the goals, one of the major goals of Hometown Pride, and there are several of them, is to get, you know, every city, every county seems to have countless plans and projects. And very little action to actually achieve those plans. We spend a lot of money, a lot of time creating goals that are put into a filing cabinet until we decide we need a new set of goals. And we start over with a new set of goals without always, I mean, yeah, we, things do get done, I'm not saying that. But that and also including volunteer being, like the Paint Iowa, like the painting grant, I think would be a great way for us to mobilize some volunteers. You know, are there people who would really be willing to go out and help their neighbors with a painting project? You know, how can we do this? Can we get some cross-generational things happening? Do I expect seventy-year-old people to be on eighty-foot ladders or forty-foot ladders? No. Do I expect ten-year-olds on ladders? No. Do I want me on ladders? No, I, my palms get sweaty saying the word ladder. But, um, nevertheless, I mean, I, I think if we can think of some ways that we could actually, you know, planning for the future and looking at things that could be happening, both in the residential, the business area, I mean, throughout, you know, that I think would be something really in keeping with the Hometown Pride, saying, sorry to crash into your meeting here, but, um.
No, I think, I think that's a good idea. I think, go ahead and put you on the agenda so we can just hammer out, do a little brainstorming and see well, how we might work together.
No, it'd be good, yeah. Sorry to intrude on your meetings, but, um.
Sorry you had to sit there the whole time to say that.
That's fine, you know. You wait, you wait for the public forum more than that.
Oh, well, no, you missed the public forum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give me later.
I was trying to see, teach somebody how to say.
Okay, well, uh, does anyone else have anything for the board forum?
I have a question in regard to the law apartments. That was basically condemned because of or I mean, the people were told to leave because the what was?
I, I have to be honest. I don't, I don't actually know the law apartments, apartments myself. Is that, are those the ones on Sixth Street?
Yes, or at the end.
Wasn't there, wasn't the bottom floor full of sewage?
Yeah, there was a problem with sewage, I think, for one thing.
Okay. Recently or?
No.
Well, when they were, when they were still occupied.
Okay.
Surely you?
Yeah, it's been ongoing, I think.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, it seems like, but I've seen cop, I've seen cops up there.
Yeah, they were there a lot.
More recently than two years, like last, like this winter.
Yeah, but.
Are there people just crashing in there?
Well, there's a house behind there. Were they at that house maybe?
They were definitely at those apartments.
They were at the apartment?
I know one of those apartments was being used probably up until about two years ago in there.
The one on the very north end?
Yes.
Next week, still deliver meals on there. They're only gonna deliver meals on there.
Now he lives, probably he's not there right now either. I don't like that.
Yeah, so I don't know. I was thinking it was about two years ago that somebody was in there, but.
Does that, all right, are you just having a discussion or does that bring up a point about something?
I, I just cur, just curious.
Okay.
That's all.
So it would be nothing, nothing that would stand in our way?
No.
Awesome.
If you're inside of it, they're terrible. I don't think you've ever been in it.
Yeah, I've been in.
Yeah, disgusting.
Four years ago. Four years ago, I was campaigning and it went through there.
Yeah.
Bad times.
I would, probably, probably so, yeah. There's asbestos and everything. I was hurt.
I'm sure there is. All the tiles and stuff like that, yeah.
Do we have anything else for the board forum?
That would be a chunk of change to put down.
If not, I'll move on to, uh, future agenda items, meeting times, meeting date, uh, third, third Tuesday, six thirty P M. right here. Work for everybody? Anyone need a number? April. Good Tuesday, one, two, three, April twenty-one. Did I have that right? Seven fourteen twenty-one. Six thirty. Chambers. And then for, uh, future items, so far I've noted, we're gonna have a Hometown Pride representative discussion with them. Uh, look at the pool and fence laws again after I talk with Stacy and bring some stuff back. Bring some stuff back for attorney suggestions for electronic meetings, how to have those and possibly approve a, a method for us. More discussion about the beautification at that point, possibly an update, beautification update. And I'm wondering for, uh, the, for the planning and zo, zoning officer activities, do we want him to start, we, we can't vote on it tonight and, and put it into place tonight, and I'd like Stacy to be here for it. But do we wanna have a discussion about, like, having him generate a report? So that we have something to review of what he did for the prior month when he can't make it to these meetings?
It's an idea.
I think he did that for a time or two.
Yeah, for a while.
I think that was very informative. I appreciate it. So you kinda know what's going on, especially if he's not gonna be here.
So we'll, so we'll put that, so I'll put that on the agenda for us to finalize what we want to be on the report. So we can kick that back into gear. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to see on the agenda next month?
Do we need a report on the, what he's done with the properties that?
That we told him to look at?
Yeah.
Well, I think that would just be in, in his general activity for a report. It'd be nice if he showed them next week's or next month so we could talk about it all. I'll talk to him personally to, to try and get him to come so we can have the discussion about him with him.
Because really, if you think about it, if we're gonna use up some of that money before July.
Yeah.
We really need it.
Gotta get going.
Going. We really do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll cover all this with him tomorrow then.
It'll be the third week of April by the time we meet again and probably have to make.
Well, we'll still be able to pay for whatever, whatever Time Con spends on it prior to July. If he, if he starts on something right away. But, so I, you guys have already directed me or whatever to talk to him. I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow. So that he knows to start working on those homes.
And we're gonna try and have that press release in the paper next, in the next week or two?
Yes. I didn't write that on the back of something I gave you, did I? I got it right here.
No, it's on the back of that.
I got it right here. Yes?
Okay.
I'll, I'll also look that up and, and re-perfect it for, for the new one. If, uh, if there's nothing else to add to the agenda, I'd enter, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay. Go ahead.
Jim seconds.
Right. The minister.
Right on. All those in the paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.